Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. And one of the first things we have here is the approval of the agenda 2.1. If you haven't had a chance, make sure you hit refresh so that you can see the agenda and the attachments. Once you do that, if I could have a motion.
So move second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Now we're going to go straight on into 3.1 Beaufort County Schools Marketing Presentation. And we have Ms. Procos with the Washington Daily News. And you do have an attachment. And Ms. Procos, do you want us to pull the attachment up or watch it on the screen? What will?
Whatever makes you feel more comfortable. I also brought to leave later for all of you, put your hands out if you want to have something just in here to make notes on.
Okay.
The attachment should be found so people can see it on the screen without having to turn.
Okay. We're the Washington News Media, which is a company who produces the Washington Daily News, Washington Magazine, WashingtonDailyNews.com, and several other independent agencies with special looks that have your publications and special interests. We are Beaufort County's hometown media. We've got a base on the ground anywhere that serves this area. And we are very proud of that. We've been doing it for a long time. This, my voice isn't loud enough, but thank you. This is our ad director, David Singleton, who is with me this evening. And he's going to be going through the presentation formally. Mr. Singleton is an extremely experienced person. He's been a publisher at many papers. He's been an ad director. He's been somebody like me. I am the senior media consultant. And I have worked also in other markets like Miami. In fact, I worked for the Miami-Dade County Public School Board for almost eight years in a public information capacity. So I'm very familiar with the school system, the different components, the importance of the teachers, the importance of the students, staffing, getting the word out, and the challenges that have become increasingly mounting over the years on how to do that. But we have some solutions and we'd like to present them to you. So I'm going to let Mr. Singleton take over now. Thank you very much.
I want to make sure that mic is on too.
Can you tell? Is it on?
It's on. All right.
Okay, thanks. C.C. put this together. And C.C.'s, many of you know C.C. She's been around here for a long time now. And she's a great resource for us here at the Washington Daily News. And we thank so much of her that, you know, she'll make me do the presentation, and that's okay. What we've done here is put together a, after meeting with Mark and after meeting with Matthew, we put together a presentation that hopefully will address some needs and will be a self-apparent value to the board, to the school system, and to Beaufort County. That's what we're trying to do. That's what the aim of this presentation is for. It's designing a marketing package to accomplish a number of goals. And we'll walk through those. This is not a long presentation, so this will be painless. On our first page here, we do have the overview of objectives. Number one, student retention. And then, of course, the student retention away from competing magnets and other educational options, which we all know they're out there. Establish closer relationship with community and families. That's a big key in terms of, we already know what Beaufort County Schools does in our communities, does in our towns, but not everybody is aware of the extent of it. And this campaign is designed to accentuate that. And last but not least, teacher recruitment outside the area to Beaufort County for a more global learning experience. Digging down a little deeper into this, we want to reacquaint the community with BCS, students, staff, and the overall school experience. Introduce the staff as life experience influencers. And that will become apparent. We have some what we call spec ads or promotional ideas that will kind of show what we're talking about there, as well as educators, administrators, non-instructional employees. This is key because it takes the teachers, it takes the administrators, it takes everybody that's involved in Beaufort County Schools to make this work. To heighten awareness and the value of the current curriculum while bringing new curriculum forward. It can't be stressed enough that we know that y'all work very hard to keep a curriculum that's up to date, that is modern, that is moving forward. And that needs to be known. And it needs to be known by the general community at large. Recruit new teaching talent and update diversity experiences for students. And lastly, to establish a current day BCS mission. Now, in talking before, we understand there's a mission. And of course, you can't operate without a mission statement. Everything you do holds true to that. But as we look forward, how does that move? How does that change? How does that become a more integral part of what we do? So this image and branding plan consists of a few different elements. And I'll try not to get too in the weeds, as they say in here. But first of all, what we've done is we've put together prints, magazine, digital, social, all of the components that we operate in to create a synergy, a branding campaign that works on a lot of different levels, not just to add the newspaper. But that does start with the newspaper. The Washington Daily News is Beaufort County's only media. That's our only job is Beaufort County. We have over 90% of our circulation in Beaufort County. We have 90% of our web audience in Beaufort County. Beaufort County is our home, and that's what we do. So in the Washington Daily News, we are proposing a four-column by 10-inch-wide ad in the newspaper. That doesn't necessarily mean much to y'all, but it is designed to be not so much a page dominant ad, but enough to wear it sizable and enough to where nothing else can outsize it there on the page. It's a little over half-wide and half-tall on a page. Running weekly on the day of your choice in the Washington Daily News. And that includes a pickup in the shopper that we do. That goes to 7,000 non-subscribing households in Beaufort County. Between the reach of the Washington Daily News, the shopper, and our online portal, our penetration is very high and surprisingly strong for a community our size. In addition to that, I have page ad in Washington, the magazine. Many of y'all are familiar with the magazine. The magazine is an extremely high-quality, six-times-per-year publication that we put a lot of work into every single time. And in the two years I've been here, I can't tell you how much we've labored over that. It's a tough thing to pull off, time after time, but somehow it looks good every time we put one out. Digital marketing on WashingtonDailyNews.com. What we have on here is 338,000 impressions over the course of the year. Now, a third of a million impressions sounds like a lot, and it is. But just to be clear, what we're talking about on an impression is not every time somebody pulls up a webpage. You actually have to see that ad for it to click, for it to register. So that boils down to about 28,000 impressions a month. That's a healthy representation on our site with roughly 600,000-page views a month. Our Friends to Follow Social Media Portal, that's an interesting thing where we take folks' Facebook page and we basically broadcast it onto our website. So it's spinning that Facebook post, primarily Facebook, out to a much wider audience as opposed to your Facebook friends and family, so to speak now, that already sort of follow what you're doing. Lastly, targeted digital across the web, 300,000 impressions annually. That's in the same ballpark as the number of impressions that are on our site. What we mean by targeted digital, these are ads that don't show up on the WashingtonDailyNews.com. These are targeted by demographic, by location, by age, by income, by race, by anything that we want to parse those demos out to be. Therefore, we can attract, for example, if you wanted to attract the attention of high school athletes, you would, we would put these things into our little system, and an ad might show up on max preps, which many of you are familiar with in terms of high school football. So it delivers the ads across the web, not just on our website, and that's 25,000 impressions a month. The targeted print opportunities, there are six of these that are outside of what we do with the Daily News and the magazine. We are recommending participation in graduation. That's kind of a no-brainer for us to include that one. We want that section to be huge. Welcome. Malcolm Magazine is what we put out every June in conjunction with the Beaufort/Washington Chamber of Commerce. And so as a new commerce guide for people who are considering the area, it's a great place to position BCS schools as an important place to consider if you're moving to the area and perhaps have school-aged children. Our back-to-school section, which comes out in August, as well as football preview. Our profile that just came out this past weekend for 2019, proposing for 2020. Profile is basically what is known in the industry standards as a progress edition. And what better place to show the progress Beaufort County Schools has made than with a representative effort there. And so all of those, as you see, they're kind of scattered throughout the year, but they're targeted. And we have other sections that we didn't put on there. Those are the ones we think are best suited for y'all's message. This is where C.C. really shined in terms of developing some sample branding messages. And I know that some of that type is hard to read on this size, but that's why C.C.'s got a printout and she's going to share. Which one would you like to share, C.C.?
Oh, let's see. Ms. Procos? Well, let me start by saying that these are messages that are designed to talk about school personnel and who they are as people, more than just the principal or the teacher or the nutritional specialist in the cafeteria. These are people who have direct input into a child all year long and all during the day that they interact with them. That's a great influence on children. And it's important to let these, and it's a hard job. It's hard to juggle that many kids in a school. I mean, it's hard enough for me to juggle my daughter at home. Sometimes I can't imagine having to do that with hundreds of children. But they do it. They do it gracefully. If they're good at it, they wouldn't have the jobs that they have. So while we have a lot of these competing factors that are going around that might be attracting children to other educational venues for a variety of different reasons, and some of that you just can't help. I mean, there are parents that might want to homeschool their child or send their child to a private school or a Christian academy or whatever that is, and that's fine. But it may be that they're thinking about that because they don't realize just how good they have it here. And so not only do we want to show the parents, the public, the grandparents and the families, the kind of wonderful people that really we do have working with our students, but we also want our people who are on staff to feel valued and more than just somebody who shows up at 5:00 in the morning or 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning and does what they do and goes home tired every night, because they are people with lives outside of school. So I say all that to talk about why I wrote these. Now, these are fictionally written about fictional people based in real-life places here. I am very confident that we have real personnel in our schools who would fit this model of a showcase or a spotlight on them. So I'm going to read one example that I have here. And I guess I'll read the example about the one on the left, which I made up as a school counselor example. And the headline is "Tough Times, Complicated Decisions, and Light at the End of the Tunnel." There are many reasons Mr. Devon Moore became a school counselor. His experiences growing up showed him he wanted to help others overcome the things he went through and have a successful life. This is his quote. "Growing up, I was the smallest kid in my neighborhood. I grew up in a south-side suburb of Atlanta where most folks didn't have much. And my mother made sure we learned to respect others and do the right thing at all times. That got me bullied. It was wrong, and I learned how to rise above that. This led me to be a school counselor and also a certified self-defense teacher and self-esteem coach. Finding the way through life is complicated, but there's always a light waiting at the end of the tunnel if you're honest with yourself and want to succeed." Now, that's Mr. Moore's quote. And then we sum it up by explaining, "Mr. Moore has great impact on our students. They know they can count on him to talk through tough times and show them positive ways to resolve problems." This is the tagline, and this is really what I feel is what we're focusing on with those two bolded lines I'm going to read now. "Preparing Children for the Future. We're glad your child is with us." Beaufort County Schools and then phone number and website and logo, it's very simple. It's very simple. But that's the kind of a style message that I wrote for that gentleman. Should we click to another slide? Or do you want to read another one?
Let's go. I like the bus driver. You want to read one more?
You want me to read? Sure. I'll read the bus driver. Be happy to read the bus driver. So the bus driver, his fictitious name is Mr. Adam Smith. Mr. Adam Smith does a lot more to help children than just drive them to school. He's been coaching youngsters in seasonal sports for many years now. He dependently transports students during the week, then teaches sportsmanship and teamwork on the weekends. Growing up, my father was a bus driver and coached my football team. He inspired me to share the same foundations. I feel like I'm making a big difference, especially for those kids who don't have the kind of home life that encourages activities or the importance of going to school every day. Mr. Smith greatly impacts our students. They know they can count on him to get them where they need to be safely and on time. Preparing children for the future, we're glad your child is with us." So this is kind of nice. It talks about who these people are rather than just picking your child up at the bus stop and dropping them off and bringing them home at the end of the day. And that's a good thing for making the staff feel good and valued and retaining them to continue to work with us in the system.
So, C.C., I'm going to go back to the first one. And I just want you to tell the folks who these folks are. You don't have to read them, but the first one you did was this, was counselor.
So I did a counselor.
The second one is the?
A maintenance technician.
Maintenance tech.
Mm-hmm. Our cafeteria, our nutritional specialist, who is the cafeteria lady, essentially.
Very good. And then?
A science teacher.
Uh-huh.
And then our transportation tech was our bus driver. And then this gentleman on the right would be an example of a principal.
A principal.
And this is a teacher's aide, a teaching assistant, that I enjoyed writing this one very much. This lady, her example is that she worked with middle school students, and that's a very trying age, middle school children. Lots going on with them in their heads and their physical bodies at that time, and it's confusing. And their attention span is the attention span of a gnat. But she helps the English teacher and shows them how to break down sentences and write well using the examples of quilting. She brings in her quilt and shows them how to put pieces together for a nice quilt in the end, a good outcome. And she's very patient, and they need that. And they also come to her quilt shows. And that was a fun message. I had a very good time writing all of these. I like to write anyway. It's like I like to talk, couldn't you tell? But it was just illustrative of the things that we can do in this type of style, which it would be a pleasure to tell any of the stories of our staff. You're welcome.
So in looking at that, you can see that these sample messages represent a wide variety of the types of folks that the school system employs. And it's designed to basically show and not tell the strengths of our people. And our people's, what is our number-one strength. It's designed to be a reinforcing mechanism for those who are already in the school system, as well as it is to help people understand who are outside the school system, the successes that we have. We have these stories. We just don't know them yet. And we can find those people, and we can write those stories, and we can put them out there as examples of success stories, not only in the classroom, you know, but in life. The next aspect of this is the recruitment phase. We're really fortunate here. One of the things I get to do for the Washington Daily News is, I operate a classified center. You know, Washington Daily News is affiliated with Boone Newspapers, and we have about 90 newspapers across the country. I work with several newspapers in North Carolina, Virginia, and in Georgia, where we can do specific targeted ads in those newspapers through our office, where we can recruit for, I would think ostensibly, teachers, educators, but for whatever recruitment needs are. This package allows us to keep an ongoing presence in all 10 of those newspapers on an ongoing basis at a tremendous discount. What we've also done is take the other half of those digital impressions that we referenced earlier and targeted for recruitment. That means that we can look at any number of demographics, places where people might want to come to live in North Carolina from. You know, I was talking to Martin Johnson the other day, and he was telling me about how businesses like to relocate from Ohio, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and those types of places. Maybe we can mimic some. Maybe we can target those specific areas for recruitment as well. Those types of things are an ongoing presence that will pay results over the long haul. And that's what this is about. This is a strategy that's designed to take place over a year to be effective both internally and on the outside as well. These are just some examples of the digital ads. They're a lot different than what we do in print. One of the advantages of print, of course, is that, you know, the old saying goes, we have ink by the barrel. On the web, the space is limited. Those ads that you see there, what we call 300 by 250, they're the size in pixels. They're big-box ads, as they're more commonly referred to. And there's three different creatives that are listed on there. Seeking Educators for Life. We'd Like to Teach the World, So We Need You. And Calling All Teachers, a very simple type of approach that's a no-nonsense deal that says, hey, if you're interested in being a teacher in Beaufort County Schools, what you do, of course, is you click on that ad, and it goes to our site. It goes to anything that you wanted to help give prospective educators more information on perhaps becoming a teacher here. The result is a synergy, where we're preparing children for the future. And like we said on those sample ads, we're glad your child is with us, and they're glad their child is with us. So it's designed to create that synergy, to make people feel good that are already here, make them feel good about their attendance or their children's attendance in Beaufort County Schools. And really, it's taking a position that says, we're doing the right things here. Because I can't change other people's minds, they have to change their minds. They have to see it. So there's a little bit of strategy there in terms of how we've laid this out. Any questions?
Covered it pretty well.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I was just going to thank them for their time and all the energy they've put into this. And thank you for meeting with Mr. Doan and I. I think you captured what we were asking for.
Oh, good. That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
I like what I see. I was just going to ask, was this like a total package? Or was it, is there any opportunity for like a shopping list? If we could, you know, pick something, maybe one thing we might not want? Or, I mean, just ask?
Yeah, all those are priced incrementally.
Right.
So if you look at the first one, which was the image and branding plan, which is probably the key baseline aspect of it, but maybe weren't so interested in the classified recruitment aspect, you could cut, and that's why we priced them on the different pages, so that you could kind of mix and match what was, you know, whatever suits your needs.
Got you. Yeah, that's all of that.
And Mark has this breakdown for Mr. Cheeseman?
I have it.
The breakdown. It's not an action item, so it's something we can discuss outside.
No, just for information tonight.
Yeah, and if you'll look, for example, on the targeted and print opportunities, all of those sections there are totaled at, the total there at the bottom of the page. But if it turned out we wanted four of them, we'd price those out for you. We can custom any of that that we need to.
Right. And this is our first step in doing this. So you've given us a very comprehensive bid package, and I really do appreciate it. And this is something that we will be discussing and trying to figure out in our budget what we can and cannot do.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just one more crazy question.
Yes.
Under recruitment, do you just not have any businesses in South Carolina? See, you went North Carolina, Virginia, Georgia. Why do we skip South Carolina?
I work the markets. I'm assigned, sir.
I just was thinking, to get to Georgia, we've got to go through South Carolina.
Well, you know, it's funny, when I first got on with Boone Newspapers, and there were 90 papers in 19 states, I said, Florida? I used to work in Florida. No. And South Carolina? You know, I have some family there. No. But yeah, we're from North Carolina down to Georgia and then all the way up to Minnesota. So it's got, and we can use different papers, too. I just use the ones as an example that we operate out of.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I really appreciate it.
And there may be a time in the near future where we may bring you back to ask you. Once we have a chance to discuss it, we'll bring you back for some more.
Absolutely. Anytime. We're happy to be here and just to thank y'all for.
Carol, can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
You gave us a calendar or kind of a timeline of different times during the year. When do we need to meet, get back with you on a schedule to meet these guidelines and timelines and so forth?
And that's one of the things that we tried to do was, whenever your start date is, let's say, for example, if you wanted to start at May 1st, I can gear it so that it starts May 1st. It's an annual program that can start from any point and go 365 from there.
So in other words, Profiles, which has already come out, we would be in the next one.
You'd be in the next one. And that's the, you know, kind of the one that's just past us. But yeah, so yeah, it's a rollover deal. So for example, if we started June 1st, it would roll through May 31st.
Got you. Okay. Any other questions?
Well, one more thing. The pieces that I wrote about our staff, we can do the same type of engagement pieces. I mean, these are engagement pieces. That's a good word for that. We can do that also with the programs, special science programs, special English programs, whatever we have that would be important to bring forward and shine light on so that parents are very aware if they have that option and what it is. We can do that with any of those aspects.
Well, I love those. I think every component of Beaufort County Schools is important and valuable to us. So I want to give them all the props we can.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We are going to move on. 3.2, the Southern Regional Educational Board presentation. Ms. Lori Johnson, we have some more attachments.
Yes.
So would you like for us to pull up the fact sheet first?
Probably the PowerPoint. The fact sheet is just extra reading material for you all.
Okay, so the board meeting about SREB.
Yes. So first off, thank you all for having us here today. Thank you, Mr. Cheeseman and Ms. Lilly have been very helpful to the Southern Regional Education Board as we are launching a network of schools in rural North Carolina. Education Board as we are launching a network of schools in rural North Carolina to dig in some problems of practice around what's inhibiting the success of, in particular, our Black, Latino, and low-income students in the region. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how this all started and what we hope to do with Beaufort County Schools. And to start off, the Southern Regional Education Board is a compact of sixteen southern states and runs from Delaware to Texas, though Delaware sometimes decides not to be southern. They are in the Southern Regional Education Board. And what the governors and two gubernatorial reps make up our governing board. We're considered an apolitical organization, and it was founded in the forties on the idea that if we want to bring economic vitality and maintain that in the South, then education has to be something that states come together and think about. That vision and mission continues to guide us today. And I am in the, in the School Improvement Division. We also do policy work and have some post-secondary work as well. In the School Improvement Division, we work specifically with K-12 education, with most of our expertise being at the secondary level. So some frameworks that we have in place that some educators are familiar with are high schools that work, making middle grades work, and technology centers that work, and with SREB being the umbrella under which those frameworks are housed. I work on a grant team, and the grant that we are talking about tonight is funded by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And that fact sheet that is attached describes the press release that they put out last fall, showing that Southern Regional Education Board was one of nineteen organizations that applied and was given a grant to start networks of school improvement around digging into the issues that are impacting the success of our Black, Latino, low-income students. So as part of that grant, we were funded to support two networks. One of those networks is an urban network, and we launched that in the fall in Birmingham, Alabama, with twelve schools in a single district. And because our work over the years has been so heavily in rural areas, and the South has a larger rural population than other regions in the United States, we went, the foundation had first wanted only to work with large districts, and we made a case that we felt very strongly, if SREB was going to participate, that we wanted to support rural communities in the South. Then we started thinking about where should we land with this work, and we began thinking mostly about North Carolina. And the reason why is we've done a lot of work in North Carolina over the past about five years specifically on instructional practices related to literacy and mathematics, and built some relationships in different districts. And then we also, when North Carolina new schools closed, we hired a good bit of their staff to continue the type of work that they were doing, and they had the relationship in Beaufort. And we already had an existing relationship at SREB in Bladen and Stanley County. So we approached all three districts about wanting to participate in this network, and we got positive responses from the three superintendents involved. And we are trying to get launched this spring to hit the ground running at the nineteen-twenty school year. The foundation did set some parameters on what they're funding, so as we work with the districts, we will go through a process of thinking about where their greatest problems lie. And then the three districts will come together with their data and think about where we want to focus our efforts for our network. So we have eighth grade on track. That's composite of, you know, success rates as well as attendance and discipline issues. Eighth grade is hard to measure if you don't really look at what ninth, how they do in ninth grade, because that's the big measure of the eighth grade success, is how that transition to high school happens. So it's likely, based on initial conversations with districts, that this network will have an eighth, ninth grade component to it. But we also are open to exploring the data and seeing what comes up, because the other investments are around college ready on track, that's that eleventh, twelfth grade, ACT, SAT, post-secondary readiness, high school college access. There's networks out there that are focusing in on that, and the types of things that that looks like for, for communities is help with, with FAFSA, with college applications. My, I am a mom of one boy, so all my hopes and dreams are in that one boy. And I was ten years a high school principal. And last year, we went through the applying to college process, and I'm telling you, it's not easy. And that's someone who has been in the business, so to speak. So when, when we talk about high school college access, we know that our students in poverty, our first-generation collegegoers have a huge barrier to cross in terms of the family support to get over that hump. And then post-secondary on track, we wouldn't really be in a position to do that in a K-12 school, but they were looking for post-secondary partners, and that's how do we keep kids in school? I always called it a bad day indicator, when it was October, and I'd see one of my football players that graduated last year and went off to college, walking down the street. That means he went to college, now he wasn't there. Bad day indicator. That's what post-secondary on track is about. How do we support our kids who are first-generation collegegoers to stay and thrive? So those are the investment opportunities. And like I said, I'm thinking, given the three counties and the initial review of data, that that eighth and ninth grade would be where we end up landing. So when we talk about supporting eighth and ninth grade, or any of those investment opportunities, we would start by digging into the data of where we're at currently. The, the network for school improvement is really borrowing the processes that you would see in healthcare. So I went to the Institute for Healthcare Improvement to learn how they approach problems of practice, and it's much more scientific in nature. You don't go in and tinker. You go in and you test, and you support that test or that change you're going to do, and then you're measuring along the way whether or not it has an impact. And in education, over the past, the decades that I've been in it, sometimes it feels like we throw noodles on the wall. We're desperate for something to work, so we throw a lot at it. And the measurement and the deliberation and the scientific mindset is what we're hoping to bring capacity for in these districts to really think through, why is this working? If it's not working, why is it not working? And then how can we get what we think is a proven practice to work in our context with our kids and our communities? And we'll do that through deliberate processes, small tests, and support. We would never want to ask a group of educators or, or anyone really, to make a change and then not support them with it. But we do see that over and over again. I remember being a teacher, going to a professional development. It was told it was the greatest thing, and then I was just back in my classroom, no one ever mentioned it to me again. I was just kind of on my own to implement, or not. It just kind of depended. Those, we don't have the luxury or the time, because each moment that we do that style of professional learning, or that style of lack of support, we have kids that are struggling, just, you know, not getting the support they need. And it requires our support and deliberation of the educators. So the type of processes this will involve is we'll start with what we call kind of a comprehensive curriculum and instructional review at each school. We'll then look at the data from the curriculum instructional reviews and work with Beaufort County Schools on the data that bubbles to the surface in terms of what seems to have the highest leverage for change, the biggest issues, and what the ones that we think we have capacity or that we want to build capacity to address. Then we would go to the other districts and convene and think through the commonalities. We don't have to all do the same work, but we do all have to be working towards the same goal. So for example, if we work with Stanley County Schools, and they determine that for eighth grade success, the biggest inhibitor is writing, and their, that's what their test scores show, that's what we see happening in trends over time, but we come to Beaufort, and there's a barrier with mathematics, then we're still working on that eighth grade to ninth grade transition, but here, we're focusing on the data that, that they need to focus on, while over here, we're working on what they need. So it's context-specific and data-driven. Then we, as part of the grant, we will have a team working in Beaufort as needed in terms of what types of expertise might be necessary. We also have a researcher assigned to the team, and the type of support could be instructional in nature in terms of extra coaching support, and then also leadership in nature, because leadership really sets forth some of the systems that might be uncovered. So the type of system, I just want you to think it's not just always the classroom, right? It's always, sometimes it could be, well, how are students placed into classes? Why are these the classes that are offered? And what's the curriculum? What's the core? It's not always within the control of teachers, so we really broaden it out and also think about what leadership systems are in place and what instructional systems are in place. And then I put a few activities on there that we'll do. We'll visit other networks. This has, is a growing trend nationally because of the way you can accelerate change by learning from others and collaborating, so getting outside yourself. I was in a district that, that didn't get outside itself enough, but I, when I left my district, I thought I knew everything. I went to SREB, and these past four and a half years, I've learned a ton about what's happening out there. That's what the network does. It accelerates our own knowledge, because we're learning from and with other educators who are attacking the same problems in their communities. And then also, we'll, as an example, we'll do surveys that help us understand how the participants in Beaufort are feeling about this work, and also have a pretty comprehensive data review with the district. And that way, we can set targets together, and we can keep our eye on what, what we're really shooting for, which is that academic success for all students, but specifically looking at our subgroup data for our Black, Latino, and low-income students. And this one, I'm not going to read it out to you, I just wanted to give you a sense of the core parameters for the work. These are kind of our guiding processes, with the very first one being ensuring that we have a, a clear understanding of the problem. And the way that, what that really means is, you can't solve an issue unless you know it deeply enough to know where to begin. So that is why we start with a curriculum instructional review, but we are 100% certain that after a curriculum instructional review, we will walk away with an incomplete picture of everything that happens in a school. They're complex organisms, but it should bubble some things to the surface that then we can go back and more deeply understand the issues. And then we'll move through a process, it appears, to, whenever you have something on separate lines, that you think of it as linear, but we'll constantly be going back to, did we understand the problem that we thought we understood? And so it starts linear, but it cycles all around. And then what we, where we really will concentrate on this initial review of the curriculum and instructional processes within each of the participating schools, is looking at instruction, curriculum, career pathways or exploration opportunities. That's where that engagement is, is hopefully happening. And then what systems of support are in place for students? And then finally, is there evidence of a continuous improvement process? And if, if yes, if no on any of these, it doesn't matter, it's all data. So that's where we start, is collecting the data and then pushing it back to Beaufort County Schools and saying, okay, this is what the data tells us, and then collaborating on where are we going to begin this work? So again, we're really excited to work with Beaufort County Schools, and with your support, I think we can do great things in the community. And, and I think, we chose the schools based on the grant requirements, which was having a, a large percentage, meaning not fifty-one percent, not just making it, but a large percentage of Black, Latino, low-income students. And the four schools that we are proposing to work with right now are Washington, the Early College, Chaco Winity, and P.S. Jones.
Excellent. Questions?
Any questions?
What's, what's the timeline? When, when are you planning on starting? How long is it going to last?
Yeah, so what we plan to do is this spring, do the curriculum instructional reviews, and unpack that data with the schools. Have our first network convening in the summer to get to all narrow in on how we're going to begin this work. And then it's funded for two full school years after that. And the foundation has said that we have opportunities to renew our grants. And what we, we've had a relationship with them for over a decade now, so we anticipate renewing and maybe even expanding to other districts or other schools within partner districts.
Why Early College? I don't see them as a school that's struggling academically.
Yeah. We, we just said to the district, these are the schools that qualify based on the part, the number of schools. And then the district decides. But we, we'd love to see participants with high capacity, medium, and low capacity. Every, we can always learn from each other with it. We, I'm a strong proponent of mixed ability classrooms for the same reason, is that, you know, you learn a lot, and someone who might be having great success here can always do better, and then our other participants could learn from some of the processes they're doing. So that would be why I would think that they would be a good participant.
I just, I don't see them as being a school that, because they are so different than the other three high schools, which do present struggles academically, and do all three have diverse populations, that I would think that one of the other high schools would, would be a more important, need the help and, and need some guidance, more so than the Early College, which is combined from all three of our high schools. And they absolutely are not having the academic struggles at all.
I mean, just coming off of.
What are they, in the ninety-eight percentile or something? And I get what you're saying about, you can learn from them, but because their day is so different, and their curriculum in many ways is very different, because they're going toward an associate degree instead of just a high school diploma, I just, I want, it puzzles me that they were chosen. They're, they're great students. I mean, I would think one of our schools that's struggling would be.
Where you take a school.
I agree. It doesn't seem to fit the profile of what they're looking for.
Right. At all.
It's contrary to what.
They have a very diverse, yeah, they have a very diverse population, but they're able, a lot of what they're able to do, they're able to do because they have, they have selected those students. And, and those, those are chosen students to go there because they're, they're, you know, they're wanting to do something different.
Right. So long as we have schools that meet the spirit of the grant, then we're happy to work with the schools at the secondary level that Beaufort County chooses for us to work with.
Excluding Early College, what was the other schools?
P.S. Jones, Chaco Winity. happy to work with the schools at the secondary level that Beaufort County chooses for us to work with.
Excluding Early College, what was the other schools?
P.S. Jones, Chaco Winity, and Washington. Hi.
Chaco Winity Middle School.
Middle School, yeah. But you take a school like Southside with the struggles we've experienced there, I know they would, I can't even imagine that The Early College met the criteria.
That's what Butch was saying.
I mean, yeah, I heard him say it. And I'm, I'm just agreeing with him. I can't even imagine it met the criteria.
But anyway, those are discussions we can have this in action.
Right, right. Cause that's, and like I said, we're open. We're just really pleased to work with Beaufort County. Just in my initial times here, there's great capacity for this style of work and leadership.
And we'll be getting updates as this is put in place and goes on.
Whenever the superintendent tells us to. We'll definitely be happy to.
Just a quick question. We have the established criteria and then work in that selection process of the schools. And even so, do you have a cap on the total number of schools that we could work with? Meaning we had four schools that were selected here.
Right.
But from SREB's point of view, do you want to cap it at four? If we, if we had five schools meet that criteria, is that okay too? Would you rather not go beyond four? If we took ECHS out of it, you know, and found that Southside or another school fit into that, then what you're thinking in that terms?
I'm thinking plus minus two would probably be the most. We are, they want, they didn't put a cap on us, the foundation, but the dollar amount doesn't change.
Gotcha.
So the, of what they're funding us for. And we have 13 schools now. Can, and I like having a little over 10 because, you know, you never know. It might, someone might get into it and decide this isn't the right work for us. But I would say plus or minus to go anywhere from, from two to six.
Sure.
Off that.
So that 13 includes our four in that list. Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson. Really appreciate it.
All right. We're going to go to 3.3 and we have Ms. Glenn Robertson McBride. She's going to talk to us about the school nutrition program, the procurement plan, which is many, many pages long.
Yes, ma'am, it is. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, board members, Mr. Cheeseman, Ms. Duke.
Talk a little louder if you can.
Thank you for having me. Tonight I'm here.
I'm sorry.
You're all right. Usually I'm the cold one, but it's warm up here. Tonight I'm here to bring you the update for Beaufort County Schools, School Nutrition Procurement Plan. We've had a procurement plan in place since 2011, 2012, and we continue to update it as federal, state and local policies and regulations change. I was just going to hit the hotspots in this document if you would like for me to, if you want me to go page by page, or if you would just like for me to leave it with you, whatever you would like.
Hot spots.
Hot spots? Okay.
When is this to be brought back to us? Will it be brought back to us for approval?
What's, what's your timeline on needing approval, Glenn?
On the 15th.
Of April?
15, excuse me.
Okay. Yeah. Go ahead and hit the hot spots so we know.
But I'm just, as long as I have it so I can read through it, I'll be okay.
Yes, sir. On page one, under Code of Ethics, we needed to add our local policies that address Code of Ethics, excuse me. And I added those on Attachment A and they are 6401 and 7730. And Part Two goes through the procurement methods used to purchase goods. And we do use several procurement methods depending on what we're purchasing and if we're in a rollover year. For the most part, these procurement methods follow our local procurement plan. One addition for school nutrition, and it's a, a federal micro purchase addition that the federal government has allowed for school nutrition programs. And it's a $10,000 limit. And I'm going to tell you what page describes it. On page nine describes the process of a micro purchase and it allows us to make a purchase under, or $10,000 or under without quotes, receiving quotes. And in all of our purchases in our local school nutrition, we do receive or try to receive at least three quotes or request three quotes. Where I see this might be helpful for us is for local produce purchases. This will allow us to go to gap certified farms within our community and, and purchase local foods that are under $10,000. It will help our community and also our program. So I feel like this is a good match for us for local produce. Soul source, the rest of these procurement methods are also in our local procurement plan. So there's no changes. We are in a purchasing alliance. If you're new to the board, we are a member of the North Carolina Purchasing Alliance where we purchase our food and supplies as one large group. I believe there's 86 counties in that alliance. And it allows us to, for our, our food and supplies to get those at a better price. The rest of the document in Part Six, it just talks about the requirements that we have to have anytime we send out a bid document, the Jessica Lunsford Act. The new one here is Iran Investment Act. We add those to our program, I mean, excuse me, to our bids. And the last page, 19, it just shows you, it's Attachment B, what kind of bidding that we do, formal, informal. It just gives you an idea of what we bid and how we, how we bid those items. Do you have any questions? That was kind of a quick sample.
We thank you though. And I thank you for continuing to try to use as many local farmers as we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I also say something?
Yes.
Not about this, but since she's here.
Oh, no.
When our power went off at our school recently, thank you for what you've done for our schools.
Yes, sir.
I ran by the school. Not that I was able to do anything, but I was told I shouldn't run by the school. And so I was out there and she had already had it all worked out. So the kids had lunch is what I'm saying. Even though we didn't have power in the schools, she was able to cover for all the kids. I walked around, looked at some of the classrooms and they were having their little, I call it picnics.
Yes, sir.
I think, I think they enjoyed the power being off that day.
I think so too.
But you, it was a lot of work for you, but thanks a lot.
Yep.
He gets a little attaboy too.
He did.
Cause he was out there and he took some stuff for the kids that couldn't have the regular, I'm going to call it regular foods.
That's right.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Well, and I thank you. I'm hearing great things from a lot of the school cafeterias, more so than I have in the past. And I know we have some new managers as well as, as well as just new ideas that you've brought forth for them to try. And I think that's wonderful. When you see more people eating, more teachers eating at school than before, that's a good thing. So thank you. Whatever you're doing, keep doing it.
Yep. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. We're going to keep going. Next, we have teacher assistant update from Ms. April Stillings and Sheila Edwards, who is going to do the talking. April?
I had the pleasure. They had a, they have a monthly meeting. They had one this past Saturday. They've got a lot going on that they participate in that the board's not even aware of. So I told them that occasionally they can come and present, tell us what they're doing.
Yes, that's right. Thank y'all for adding us to agenda two. I'm not typically a person who talks to grown people. So bear with me. They're about this tall. And I don't think I need to. I just made some notes, so I'll kind of refer back to you. Thank you for coming to our meeting. The feedback was fantastic. Your advice, we're definitely going to, you know, use in our, going forward. We want to give back to the community as well as our students. We want our faces known. We want the community to know that teacher assistants are valuable. We don't just hurt children all day. We teach children. We mold children. You know, we do. I treat them like they're mine. I all, a thousand of them in school. We've got several events coming up. We're going to volunteer at Family Movie Night, which is April 12th. That is Easter Elementary, John Contelo and John Small.
John Small.
Yeah. They're going to have a, a movie night out on the waterfront. They'll have several vendors that are out there just for the kids to come out and have fun, participate. It's a free event, not just for school children. It's for all the community children to come out. We're going to have the popcorn booth. So we'll be giving away free popcorn just so they can, you know, see our face. Several of those kids I taught that have gone on to other schools. Have you shared that across the river?
Yes.
Okay. So it's been shared across on, in Chaco Winity side. So they, you know, they're more than welcome to come over and hang out with us. In May, Chaco Winity has a, the Fire Department has an annual car show. So we're going to have a booth there and do face painting. And again, we'll have our little sign out there so they know, hey, you know, those are teacher assistants and, you know, just paint their faces and it'll be
We also have been in contact with the Accept and Excel group. They have an Easter, they're doing like Easter egg hunt for the special needs community. And the Middle, Chaco Winity Middle School SGA has already signed up to help with that. But in talking with Ms. Chris, she's afraid that that's not going to be enough to handle because it's usually a really big event. So we're kind of, excuse me, on standby as a backup to help with that. But we've talked about, you know, having, helping with an event where it's just the teachers, assist, teacher assistants, you know, coming. And she's scheduled something the first weekend in May, but that's the weekend that we're going to, the majority of us are going to be, the ones that are active anyway, are going to be at cop, right? So she's going to, you know, try to work on some other dates for us to, you know, be able to get involved with that.
Yes. And then we've also got several dates to take meals to Open Door, to the Open Door Community Center. So we're going to try to fundraise so we can get that, you know, that money so we can give back to them. Cause those are people that are in community. I'm sure that several of our children will probably have to be there, which is unfortunate. But, you know, we want to be able to help those kids. As Sheila mentioned, we'll be at conference. It's a North Carolina Teacher Assistant Association Conference, May 2nd through 5th. Nine of us are going preciously. Y'all are allowing us to go. We appreciate that. We have workshops. The birthdays are full of workshops and speakers. And, you know, we get to gain a lot of knowledge and things that we can bring back to our schools, to share with our teachers, to share with other assistants that aren't able to go, which is great. We get to mingle kind of with other teacher assistants throughout North Carolina and, and talk to them about what's going on in their counties and, and get ideas that, you know, we can share back and forth, which is, which is fantastic. I would love for school board members, principals, anybody, I would love for y'all to go in the future. And even presenters. They are always looking for presenters.
We have so many in the county, teachers in the county that are doing awesome things. And we would love to be able to share that with, you know, the organization.
And I think, I think that's...
We are having an officers meeting, just the ones that are elected. Officers is not open to all the teacher assistants on April 20th. And it's going to be at the Brown Library. We hope, we haven't secured that spot yet, but that's where we need that, at 10 a.m. And we'll also send out an email. But we would love for, you know, anybody on the board, you know, that has suggestions or, you know, knows an organization that, you know, could benefit from us, you know, helping out. We would love, you know, have your input and, and, you know, help us. We really, you know, with the way things are coming down with assistance being put, we want to make sure that, you know, the parents in our community, the citizens of our community, board members, teachers know that, you know, we are vested in our job, that it's not just a job. It's a career for us. And we want to, you know, be able to do whatever we can to be able to keep our jobs, to help the children, you know, to assist in any way that we can. And we feel like the best way to do that is, you know, by putting ourselves out there. And so we're welcome to any suggestions. And we also encourage any of you guys to join NCATA or ISAFI for associate members. You'll get their newsletters. You'll get their updates. And our district and our state officers are fighting just as hard as some of the other organizations are, you know, to try to lobby for our jobs and to, to get those pay raises and to, to guarantee that, you know, we have some longevity. And we try to do whatever we can to support them at the district and state level as well.
To go along with that, your General Assembly is now looking at, you know, changes they've had since 2008. Teacher assistant positions in the state of North Carolina have been cut by 7,400, approximately 7,400 people have lost their positions in North Carolina in the last 10 years. So what's really interesting to follow is the Senate Bill 329 that is actually asking for additional funding back to teacher assistants. And just to give credit where credit's due, Ms. Walker and Mr. Bilbro attended a session with me last Tuesday night to have direct contact with Senator Smith, who represents our county now. So she's well aware of our interest in Senate Bill 329 for our teacher assistants.
And we've been, you know, blasting that information, you know, to, you know, all of the assistants who are out of county, you know, parents, everybody, you write your legislators, you know, let them know, you know, so that we feel like, I mean, maybe, you know, the power of many can, you know, persuade, you know, our representatives and our senators to go ahead and push, push that bill through.
And it doesn't take just us. I mean, yes, I'm going to fight for my job, but I also need the people who want me to fight for my job and the, and the rest of us and for our children. It's really those, them that's going to suffer me. But thank you all.
Y'all have any questions or anything? Once again, I would like to say something. Well, I just have the pleasure of knowing these two ladies. And when Ms. Edwards said just a minute ago that they were vested, all the TAs, especially themselves, if you go out into schools and see the work that they do, I happen to see Ms. Edwards quite a bit, you would be way more than impressed and you would understand that being vested, when she says that, it's an understatement of the year. These are super dedicated employees. And I want the people watching on cam, on TV to know that these are the folks that make our schools go too. So.
And I want y'all to know, if you have a chance to ever attend one of their meetings on Saturday, while I'm always impressed, I'm impressed with our, our TAs across the county at each and every school. And they, they're, and all the schools are pretty well representative. Almost everybody has somebody there. But their main focus is what they can do for other people, who they can help. Can they help this shelter? Can they help those people? Can they help this event take place? I mean, that was their focus this past Saturday was what they could do for others, which to me just signified, that's what you do every day, is what you're doing for others. And we appreciate it and we appreciate you.
Yes.
And anybody else have a question or comment? All right. Thank you, ladies.
Ms. Walker, I gave you the packet, the conference packet, right?
Yes, you did.
And she has that. If any of you guys would like to take a look at, you know, what goes on, you know, during conference, she has copies of that.
I did. I have the packet. And their speakers and all that kind of stuff.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
See you next month.
All right. 3.5 Capitol Atlee, Mr. Stanley Hudson.
Mr. Willie.
And Mr. Willie.
Our approach to budgeting is going to be different than probably what we've seen at least since I've been here. It resembles more of what I was used to seeing in county government where we did a departmental request, a recommendation from the manager and then a board approval. It's a three phased approach. So this year, when we talked about doing our budget, we had concerns with lax hours and how we were funding it. So the delay in getting your budget is that we're doing a lot of that legwork that we usually do after the budget to identify and place folks. We're trying to do it upfront. The only problem with that is when you get your budget this year, we're going to be locking them in by position. Third grade math teacher, an EC teacher, a custodian, you name it, whatever their salary is based on the raise that state of North Carolina gives, the retirement increases and health insurance costs, those are going to be locked in. The problem with that is the flexibility that we have been using in our budget in the past has been based on operational cost. So we really haven't narrowed it in and tightened it up to that point. So we've used the flexibility on what our operational costs for teachers were last year, what the increases were projected to be. And we've kind of moved throughout the budget. This year, we're going to lock them in. So when we say that there's no money, they are truly designated, if we have 100% of employees, no lapse salaries, no leave of absence. The good part about that is it limits your risk on what we would anticipate to hit fund balance for in any given year. So I apologize for the delay, but we have quite a few more employees than I'm used to budgeting for. Mr. Cheeseman asked me to go back and pull for you what capital appropriations from the county has been as a... from the county has been over the last couple of years. And for the most part, we've, we've hung somewhere around a million dollars. There are two years that kind of stand out for us, and that's, um, the fiscal year 14-15 and 15-16. Uh, those of you that have been on the board a while, you'll recall that was the Eastern Elementary School Multipurpose Room. And then we had the, uh, Washington High School Field House. And then we also had a Washington High School Chiller. So, the chiller and the multipurpose room in, uh, fiscal year 14-15 was, uh, roughly $982,000 for those two items in that increase. Um, and then in the 15-16 year, uh, was the $471,000 for the field house at Washington High School and additional $150,000 for the EC or Eastern Elementary Multipurpose Room. So, if you'll turn to your next page. Um, basically, you see the different revenue sources that we receive within Fund IV. Right now, we're anticipating, or we're showing you what our beginning budget was for the year, any budget amendments, year date, our current budget, our activity or expenditures or revenues received for the year thus far, any purchase orders that would hit in our expenditure line, and then any remaining revenues to be collected or expenditures on those already identified projects. In the previous meetings, we talked about the capital and what the needs for the school system were. So, this budget is a request from Mr. Hudson, it's a recommendation from Mr. Cheeseman that will show the entire list that was presented to you at an earlier meeting of $15,648,370. If you'll go to our next page, the first line is the state bus lease. It's a wash, it's an expenditure in the revenue that come in from the state to purchase act, um, buses for our LEA. But if you go down and you look at the different, um, projects that we have, I did not list them individually because there were so many, but I did group them into the categories or subcategories in which Mr. Hudson and, and Mr. Cheeseman presented to you previously. That is the rough overview of your capital project. And then, once we find out funding or priorities, then we'll, we'll see where we can go from there. But this is your capital budget at this time. Any questions?
Sure, there will be, but I don't have one right now.
You're looking for approval, Miss Lynn?
We have to have it by June 30th. We'll come back with the other, uh, funds here shortly. Our plans right now are for me to work on it, hopefully meet with Mr. Cheeseman by Friday, if not Monday. So, we'll bring it back to you at your next board meeting.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Questions on my side? We just, we cleaned up the capital list, um, Mr. Cheeseman's direction, um, with the, the metal buildings, um, for the proposed place for the replacement of the modulars is put in there. There was an activity bus that was removed, talked to Jerry, and they were up on buses that acted, that was $96,000 coming, brought off the top to start with. And then there was a $300,000 duplication in security, so it numbers dropped from what you were presenting last time, and we cleaned it up. So, it's in a little different format, same things on your computers that Willie handed out, Mr. Will Mac handed out your printout, so.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
All right. All right, we're gonna go to 3.6 Student Transfer Update. Wait just a minute, excuse me, excuse me. Yes, excuse me, Madam Chair. Would you like to go ahead and, and do that?
I thought that, I thought, yeah, I thought Stan was going to...
My mistake, my mistake.
Okay, okay, all right.
I'll catch him. I'll get it. Go ahead. So, with that, um, Ms. Booth and I have had conversations specifically around a group that has been working closely together, uh, working with the park. And it has come to our attention, and Stan, this is my, where you jump in, where they're actually gonna beautify the park specifically around the placement of, of trees. And so, Ms. Booth and I had a conversation on the phone the other day. I did tell her that we were bringing to the board's attention tonight so we could recognize those who are here in, in the audience to talk a little bit about it. Ms. Booth, would you care to say more?
Sure. Um, what I, what I'll do with your permission, um, Madam Chair and Mr. Cheeseman, I would, we have in the audience our president and vice president of the PS Jones Memorial Park. And I would ask with your permission if you will allow them at least a couple of minutes to address the park. Mr. Northern, please have...
Thank you.
Good evening to every one of you. I stand here this evening to tell you that I appreciate what you've allowed us to do out there behind AirTech. There's some ground that we really, really thought would go someplace else, but you've had the blessings of your heart to give it to us so that we could beautify it for the community. And of course, you know, the KB Reynolds helped us get started, and we've completed Phase One of that park with the bathroom, which was helped by the city, and the fencing and the walking trail is completed. We, we just want to see something beautiful materialize for the community, for that area of, of the town. We are about to move into Phase Two, which includes the shrubs. We wanna plant some trees out, and this committee are gonna purchase the trees along with the help of relief from Greenville to help us to get the shrubbery out there to help beautify that walking trail. We're gonna be, they'll be planted strategically around the walking trail. And we just want you to know that we do thank you for all that you've done, all you've allowed us to do, and the help that you've given us as we proceed on this journey. Of course, we're waiting for Phase Three, which would be the playground equipment to, so that children will have more and more. The Boys and Girls Club has been so nice to come over and use the walking trail already. We have people in the community that's using the walking trail. So, I believe that this will not just be something that will be standing there, it will be used by all concerned. And we thank you for allowing this to happen. We thank this board for being so gracious to agree to allow us to use that property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Northern, and to the board and the board members for your hard work that's gone into it. I continue to go by and see the improvements and can't wait to see the, you're gonna plant trees and shrubs?
Yes.
Well, we thank you so much.
There's a lot of work been done.
A lot of work, and it, it'll continue to be a lot, you know. When it's a labor of love, it never ends, you know that, right? That's right, that's right.
Anybody would like to ask some questions about where we're gonna go or how it's gonna be handled?
Anybody have any questions?
Doing a great job.
Just it looks better. Looks real, a lot better than a big old bag of lot just sitting out there.
That's right, that's right.
Just let me, just allow me to say this to you, um, the PS Jones is not, the, the name P, PS Jones comes from Peter Simon Jones, that's the name. And we would like for you to know that the grandson of Mr. Peter Simon Jones have visited us and have introduced us to the trust that's going on with Peter Simon Jones Trust and have actually, um, become a lifetime member of the organization. And we're just so grateful because it looks like the more that we do, the more support that we get. So, we just wanna try to just keep the board informed as to what's going on so that you know that it's just not some dirt laying out there. It's a great park that's coming up, and we are really proud of it, okay?
You should be, you should be. Thank you so much, Mr. Northern. All right, we, uh, are now to the Student Transfer Update.
Sure, so, uh, in front of you, you should have, I believe, a couple of forms specifically looking at requests for student reassignment and also release requests. So, I want to thank Duke specifically for making these very clean, uh, much easier to manipulate, as in previous years, uh, parents would call in and say, now, what do I sign? What do I, you know, what do I fill out? But I want to draw your attention to the request for student reassignment on the very first line. It does indicate that this form should be filled out completely and delivered to the school, uh, in which you wish your child to be assigned by June 1st of 2019. I think that's an essential, uh, commitment to us as a district to hold steadfast on that date. So, we want to communicate that with all of our constituents, that June 1st is a deadline for our team to be able to process this work most appropriately. And moving through that, you may see, uh, the procedure behind it on school assignment, specifically for the board policy, and that is what we're gonna follow based on board, uh, board policy. So, should parents have any types of questions about reassignment or requests, we're gonna turn them to that board policy specifically, so we're not, uh, creating different rules, we're following the rules that have been established. And then finally, there's actually an attachment of your, um, your schools in terms of projected enrollment at each school. And if you notice on the bottom left, I'm making a recommendation to, uh, to the board specifically, just, you know, based on the projections that we have, which schools in theory should be closed for, uh, any type of request for transfer going into that school? So, if you look at Bath Elementary, Chalkwood Primary, Eastern Elementary, John Cotton Taylor, and Washington High, and you look on the far right-hand side and that red and yellow grid of projected enrollment numbers in space within the building, these are the buildings that we believe, um, are starting to hit that capacity. So, we would really need to think more closely in terms of sending students to that school. So, considering, I wanted to have this information in front of you, uh, you don't need to have any type of action when I get some more specifically for your guidance. So, this is the type of conversation piece that will go out to our community, uh, so they know how to, to work it.
And I think the important thing to remind, um, our families out there is that if you have a child that isn't attending out of your district, you must still put this request in every year. Don't assume that because your child is going to another school this year, that they will automatically be allowed to do that again. You have to do this every year. And I think they forget that, don't they, Ms. Duke? All right, any questions? We'll go on to summer hours.
Uh, just wanted to bring to your attention, consistent with previous years, or as my colleague would say, tradition, uh, we are looking at summer hours and so therefore, uh, the week after school lets out, after teachers are done contractually, we'll move into our summer hours. And then we'll conclude the summer hours right around the second week of August. So, as new teacher orientation starts, we'll come back to full time out. But specifically, we're normally Monday through Friday, or Monday through Thursday with Friday off, uh, so the district will essentially be closed on Fridays. But we will work, uh, with flexible schedules with our directors and, and our personnel to accommodate some of their summer plans as long as our work is getting done. So, we'll ask all of our district personnel to have meetings on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, typically not Mondays, Fridays per se, just to make sure that those who need to be at the table will be at the table. But summer hours, the, the same plan, uh, as previous years will be in effect.
All right, uh, now 3.8 Golden Leaf Foundation, the STEM Grant update, Mr. Cheeseman.
So, uh, yesterday, we had, um, a Board of Education Committee met with, uh, a Committee of County Commissioners, just to give everybody an update in terms of where we are with the, the STEM grant. Uh, so, this is where I'm now reaching out to Golden Leaf Foundation, uh, requesting a time at the table with them as the new superintendent, just to gain some guidance in terms of, um, you know, what the grant means to Golden Leaf, uh, why it was not fully funded, how much they understand our predicament of not being fully funded, we're gonna need more time to possibly raise the, those funds. But also just talk about the strength of the application in of itself, meaning some of the questions that we may have not asked ourselves in advance of the grant that we're now trying to figure out on the back end. Uh, so, with that, I have placed the call, I'm looking forward to getting a return call tomorrow. And once I have that, I'll send it out to you in terms of what date and time when I'll meet with Golden Leaf. But I think right now, it's more of a meeting to gather information so you can have greater decision-making.
And the, the current timeline that's in place where we have to respond is what?
Well, you have a, uh, it's called a, basically, a management plan. So, from the start date to that management plan is about 30 days, 45 if you want to stretch it. But Golden Leaf has been very kind to us to, to work on that start date. Um, so, considering, that's what I'm trying to get ahead of to work with Golden Leaf right now, is to really understand the flexibility of this grant, because we did not receive the entire funding, so that does put us at a deficit. And to run any type of program with fidelity, we needed the funding that we asked for. So, we're gonna seek guidance from Golden Leaf and all of that.
Any questions? All right, we're gonna keep going here. Discussion, this is the only action item we have, Southside High School Track Repair. Mr. Hudson. And you do have a link there?
Yes. This is the one that we're, that one of my last, um, capital improvements for this, um, fiscal year. Um, and this is a, it's close to the area of the price rates that we had originally budgeted for at the time, but we did find a company that does offer repairs, um, same product that's currently down on the track. Um, they will repair the asphalt that is broken from the erosion that was in turn number two, um, in lane eight. Um, they will repair all start-finish lines where the main asphalt is showing now, put everything back like it is, um, using a polymer, acrylic polymer, unless the asphalt is really, really deteriorated. But then they'll put the rubber product back on and re-strike the track. Tax all included between $1,212, and we have $60,000 currently allotted in capital. The other option was to strip the track, it's been, Mr. Cheeseman talked with another company, was the only other one, is like $167,000, that they get back to asphalt, repair the asphalt, and put the new product that they put down now.
So, to do this, will, um, uh, will this repair put them in line with being able to host and, uh, conference events and they will be, you know, they will be approved?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It would put everything, put them a sanctioned track where they could run.
That's the word I was looking for, thank you. I know there's, they have to sanction.
Lanes, everything, just back like it was originally, it was put there 20, whatever years ago, so.
Okay.
And then possibly we could take that other money and fix the other two tracks that have the same problem, which all's direction, but...
Okay.
That just about fixed all three tracks is what we currently have.
You're talking about the other two high schools?
Just about the other two high schools.
They have the same sort of issue?
They have the same issues, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, but today, you're looking for an approval on this?
Approval for the proceed with Southside with the...
With, uh, well, they're already in track season?
Yes, and they've set, I know they're already in it, and they're booked up through May now, with a few slots in June, um, as the spec just sent me, so we may get in June.
It'll be for the fall.
Definitely June, July, but, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
He said unless some other school backed out, then he would put us in that slot, but, yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Have you, have you ever used this company before?
I have not. I've asked them for references that I could go see, I wanted personally to go see it. Um, they do all kind of schools, their website is tremendous, they, they've done colleges, there's a lot of stuff on the internet that they, where they show they've done, but I officially will ask them for some sites here in North Carolina.
That you feel good about?
Yes, sir, I do. They're a 20-some-year-old company, they're not a, not a new one. They're based in Atlantic Beach, North Carolina, so they're local.
That's even better.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this, um, expense in a second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, all those opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Proceed on, Mr. Hudson.
Get it, Stan, we're gonna find anybody, we're...
Thank goodness. All right, now, we are wanting to make a motion for closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143318, uh, 11A1 and 8 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C 321, and to consult with our attorney to consider and give instructions concerning a potential or actual claim administrative or judicial action. Title of the action is 18 CBS 157 Nerzwa versus Bothford County Schools.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are in closed session, and let's take a five-minute break, please. All right, uh, we're at a closed session now. Uh, I want to entertain a motion to approve our personnel agenda as presented. We have a motion in a second, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Very quickly, we'll go around, it's been a long meeting, we're all tired and hungry. We'll go around, are there any board member updates? Ms. Booth?
I think I've gave, I gave you...
On the, on the part. Uh, Mr. Williams?
I'm good.
Ms. Pete? Mr. Bilbrough?
I'm good.
Good? Everybody good? Great, all right. Mr. Cheeseman? Great, all right. Mr. Cheeseman?
I shared everything.
Well, we're going to entertain one more motion.
Make a motion when you're ready.
Second, all right. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed, motion carried. Everybody have a good evening, thank you.